All right, welcome. Let me get to my... Welcome to Tuesday's meeting, Select Board meeting for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. The meeting was actually officially opened. We just adjourned from executive session. We had executive session per message of general law to discuss Mr. Montori's contract, in which I'll be sharing during the town manager update. So before we get started, would you all please stand and let's salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right. Our first order of business for this evening, 7:00. Rare Hospitality International DBA Longhorn Steakhouse, change of director's application, please. And this is not a public hearing, so... And just name for the record and state your business, please.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Elizabeth Pisano from Upton, Cornell, and Devlin, counsel for the Rare Hospitality International. This application is for a change of officers. We have... Lancy Lauren is replacing Joseph Kern as vice president and secretary, and Angela Simmons replacing William White as director, president, and treasurer. There are no operational changes at this restaurant.
Okay, very good. All right, let's open up to the board for questions, comments. I can just tell you from a paperwork standpoint, all the paperwork is very thorough and it's all approved, so we did have a review, so let's open up to the board. Questions, comments?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the work that went into this application.
Thank you.
I have no questions either.
Seeing there's no questions from the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the request and change of director as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All's in favor, they might be saying aye.
Aye.
Chairboards aye as well. Very good, thank you very much. That was easy, congratulations. See that?
I didn't know as many brands were under the same umbrella.
I'm glad to see you guys, we have never been to more than one since we've been together. Well, I hope you stay and have dinner here.
Welcome to Tewksbury.
Thank you. We'll visit one of our fine establishments.
I will.
Thank you as well.
Looking at the next scheduled items. Macca Alfresca's New Wine and Malt Off-Premise Liquor License Application. This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to read, waive the reading of the public notice?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second. All's in favor, they might be saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Yes, please.
Before we get to this matter, I just want to disclose for full transparency purposes that my son is an employee of the owner of this restaurant. I don't believe that that would create an undue bias on my part relative to this matter. There's no personal interest associated with the proposal, but for the benefit of the public, I want to make that disclosure. So I'm going to continue to participate in the discussion because I don't believe it warrants my recusing myself.
Very good. All right, seeing if there's no objections. The floor is yours. Why don't you just... So typically for a public hearing, we'll let you state your business and reason for business. We'll have some questions from the board, we'll open it up to the public at that point, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll reconvene it with the board, so... Okay, very good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm George Malonis. I'm here with Mark Anglin, who's the principal owner of a new entity we've created. It's called Macca Alfresca. We're here to seek the board's approval to issue a beer and wine license for non-premises sales at the property. Property's located adjacent to the existing market on Main Street. Mark has negotiated lease to expand his existing market into the adjacent facility. It's going to be 7,200 square feet. It's really going to be an expanded facility of what he's... operation, that what he's doing right now, but he's going to be able to offer a lot more products and a lot more... in a different manner and a way he really wanted to do with the original market. So he's very excited about the product, the process, and we hope the board will agree with us tonight and issue the permit.
Okay, very good. At this point, let's open up to the board for questions, comments. How about... Ms. Wallman?
Thank you. It was a really good application. It was all complete. I appreciate the work that went into this. The only question I had was, what's your experience selling off-premises liquor? I know you serve alcohol in your restaurant. I enjoy your restaurant. It's very well done, thank you. It's an asset to the community, and that's my only question.
Yeah, so this will be our first selling off-premise, as was our first on-premise.
Good, thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wallman hit on the only question I had. I too am a very big fan of your establishment and wish we can... I hope we can get this through for you and wish you luck with this new endeavor.
Very good, thank you.
How about Mr. Johnson?
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you, sir, for continuing to invest in Tewksbury. It's very impressive. I remember when your restaurant opened a number of years ago, and I know you expanded the restaurant itself, you've added the market, now you're expanding the market. So you're a welcome and very positive addition to Tewksbury, and we appreciate your continuing to invest in our community.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate being here.
How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you. I just want to say two things. First of all, to Selectman Johnson's comment, I guess when you came before us to expand your restaurant, the thing that impressed me the most about that was you were expanding the dishroom rather than the seating, so that you were worried about your employees and how you serviced them. I think that says a lot about if you're worried about your employees, I'm sure that your customers are even higher up on that chain, so...
Correct, yeah.
I am pretty pleased to be able to support this, and thank you for putting this document together so well. I do have one question to the town manager in terms of the A B C. Does he have to go through the alcoholic beverage or... I just want to make sure the public is aware of that.
You're welcome.
We're the first stop. I always like to double-check that. And then you will have to go there as well, so...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work in town.
Very good. Yeah, I don't think... What's existing there now? It was... That was the old liquor store.
You'll look, yes.
Exactly. So, right, not to waste words, but I mean, you're a value-addict to community, your staff, family-run operation, top-notch, so well done with the plans as well, so you must be excited. I mean, this is a big undertaking here, but it's pretty... Looks pretty darn cool, actually, so just like the board's, and I'm happy for you, so... So what we'll do is I'll pause as a board and we'll open it up. Is there any residents at this time would like to speak on behalf of this item? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next steps. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the request for the wine and malt alcoholic beverages off-premises license and designate Mark Anglin as manager of record.
Seconds.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. All's in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. See how easy that was? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, moving right along. This brings us to actually the residents forum. Do we have residents for public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, let's move to new business. We have supplemental poll work as submission for approvals. And this is from... This is from the town clerk for the eligible folks, pretty standard stuff. I think there might be one. There might be one disclaimer, I think I have it.
Yep.
There is.
One disclaimer, but... So what's the pleasure of the board? Pretty standard stuff. Any questions, concerns?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the roster of additional election staff as recommended by the town clerk. And for the benefit of the public paying attention, this list is being presented to fill vacancies that occurred since our last appointment for the upcoming elections.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Except for discussion, we're going to take the disclosure separately.
You want to take that separately?
Yep.
Okay, let's be doing... Very good. Okay, so I have a motion outside of the disclosure. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's 5-0 unanimous. Ms. Stronach, you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the disclosure for Meredith Faye.
Faye, yep.
Faye.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, 5-0. And thanks to the town clerk for pulling that together. All right. Next is order of business is Salem Five charitable contributions to the police department acceptance. Mr. Montori, do you have some insight there?
Just briefly, the Salem Five is contributing $600, donating $600 in sponsorship of the Patches for Autism Awareness by the Flutie Foundation, and we're just asking the board to accept the donation in order for the police department to utilize the funds.
They're always very generous.
Very generous.
They're always... Salem Five's always very generous, okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept with gratitude the contribution of the Salem Five Bank for the purpose of purchasing the Patches for Autism Awareness by the Flutie Foundation for the police department.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stronach. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Ms. Stronach?
Could I just ask that the town manager send a note of gratitude to Salem Five on our behalf for our continued support of things in the town, support?
Like I said, they're always very super generous, no doubt, okay. We're flying through the agenda here. Mr. Montori, I think the next one is yours. So we discussed... We have been discussing as a board, you know, what can we do for seniors, what can we do for veterans. Sometimes we're kind of handcuffed because of Massachusetts general laws. There's a lot of things out there that apply to the state, not necessarily at the local level. However, through this board, we're saying, how can we get creative as a board? You know, what can we do in addition to the state? So that's the whole premise of these two particular articles and questions, so...
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's correct. The last... The board's been talking for quite some time as a group. I've talked to each of you individually about different avenues we can take to address helping seniors in regard to tax relief, helping veterans in regard to tax relief. We've researched what other communities were doing. Everyone, you know, has taken different approaches, and we're taking a different approach. So the chief assessor and I spent some time trying to think about an approach that would reach and help those seniors in most need. Same thing with the veterans. And we really determined after looking at this closely that those seniors who are eligible for exemptions under Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D really were the most needy seniors. We looked at the exemption, which is currently $175, and in order to qualify, you must have income requirements and assets of $40,000. So what we're... The state hasn't made any changes in this area, which is unfortunate because this is driven by state statute. So we're seeking a home rule petition within this warrant article that would increase the exemption from $175 to $500. We are also increasing the threshold from, for those eligible, from $40,000 to $50,000, so we should be able to... Or to $55,000, I'm sorry, to allow more seniors to be eligible for the exemption. Beyond that, we're asking that the board of selectmen are allowed each year to increase both the exemption and the amount that qualifies for whole estate, real and personal income up to 5% in each year. It will be up to the board of selectmen. And if the board chooses to go to the 5%, 2%, 1%, or zero for the particular year, it's up to the board. The other thing that we added here, and this is something really we put in at the end because most, if not all, of the home rule petitions that have gone to the State House have an expiration date of three years because it gives the town an opportunity to make sure this isn't costing them more than they expected, and there's an out after three years. But that's something, it's up to the board how they want to handle that particular section. So that's for the seniors. We did something similar for the veterans under Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, which currently allows for an exemption for veterans of $400. That was increased to $600 with the same provision that allows the selectmen to increase that exemption up to 5% a year, depending on what the board chooses to do. Again, this has a three-year life. At the end of three years, it will go away unless it's brought forward again by the state legislature. So these are two kind of out-of-the-box thinking home rule petitions that we brought forward, and this again is based on our discussions with all of you. You know, the board's been very vocal and very involved in trying to figure out a way to help seniors, the most needy seniors, and help veterans. So this was added to the warrant for the board to review, decide upon, and go from there.
So I have some questions, but let's open up the board for questions. Why don't we start with... How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions, just a comment. I know this is something unanimously that we've all been asking about, and I wanted to thank Mr. Montori and the assessor and staff for the time. I got a crash course in home rule and the impacts and what our options were back in November, and I'm very pleased with what they've brought forward. So no questions, just a word of gratitude, and very happy to see this.
Okay, very good, thank you. How about Mr. Johnson?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. My comments are, it's unfortunate, in my opinion, that we are resorting to a home rule petition to address this. I think this is a statewide issue, and it should be addressed on a statewide basis. I know we've raised this topic with our delegation in the past. Sadly, we've seen no movement at the state level, but I do appreciate that if state government won't help us, then we can avail ourselves of a home rule petition to at least benefit residents of our community. So I support the concept. The only thing I would like to ask the town manager to explore a little deeper with town council, and I did hear what he said about other home rule petitions, the prevailing trend appears to be that there's a three-year sunset on home rule petitions. In my experience, and that's somewhat dated, working in the State House, that's probably a new phenomenon, so I'm not sure why that's the case, but if we're going to go through the pain and effort to pass a home rule petition, in my opinion, I think that we should either do one of two things. We should remove that language so it doesn't expire. Doesn't make sense to benefit our seniors or veterans for three years and then say, no, never mind, it's gone. So I'd either like to see that removed from the articles proposed, or if that language is truly something that the state legislature would require, then we go one step further and add language that would allow this board to continue the process beyond the three years. So either make it explicit by removing the language or add discretionary language that the majority of the board in three years would have the ability to continue the process if they so deemed appropriate. And I don't know what the legal consequence of those two changes, potential changes, would be, so I think it's important that we get the advice of town council before we make those changes, but I'd like to ask you to explore that.
Yeah, that's... I think that's a great idea. I think removing it probably is not a big issue. What we learned when we brought forward the increase in liquor licenses, we did not have an expiration date on there. The legislature put it in there, so you can always keep it out, and if they want to add it, there's language in here that has to come back to the board of selectmen for discussion, so I don't think removing it will be a problem, and I'll talk to town council if there's any type of language that can be added to give the selectmen the decision-making after each year, not just three years. Every year you can decide how you want to deal with it.
Yeah. All right, so I'd ask you to, you know, pursue that line of thought, and then based on that council, we can maybe take the next step and refine this a little further. So that would be those are my comments.
Makes sense. Okay. How about Ms. Stronach? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So I did also raise that same question to the town manager to say, why are we putting a three-year on this? So I am very much in align with what Selectman Johnson is saying, and to your point that you just made, if we remove it and they put it back, that's worrisome to me because they could put it back and then it's just a part of it. So I like the idea of kind of continuing with giving the board the ability to do that, and maybe this could be part of the budget process because I also asked what the impact is on this financially, and at this time, we don't really know what the impact is, and I think that widening the net is a great way to do this, and right now, we do have the funds, but I do think, you know, moving forward, we always have to be mindful of our budget, so maybe it could also get rolled into the budget moving forward as a part of that discussion in the event that there's ever the ability to even do more than that. So I really appreciate the work that was done, and I think that this is a very creative solution to helping both our seniors and our veterans moving forward. And I would also agree with Selectman Johnson's comments about the delegation on this. I would like to see some additional movement, so when we send this up as a home rule petition, I think it would behoove us as a board to mention the fact that we've taken this into our own hands and welcome any other recommendations and efforts that they could do to support our seniors and our veterans. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Montori. I enjoyed sitting down with you and Joanne Fuller, the assessor, on these matters, and I appreciate the work that you guys put in to come up with a solution. I concur with my fellow board members, particularly Mr. Johnson, with regard to the three-year provision at the end of the article. I think either it should be, as Mrs. Stronach said, left up to the board entirely or stricken from the language. I don't think if we're giving it for three years, I don't think it should run out after three years. That being said, being mindful of the budget is always important. I know that we don't know the impact right now, but this is... Is this a lower threshold than the circuit breaker?
I believe so, yeah.
I think it's a lower threshold than the circuit breaker. So we know how many people qualify for the circuit breaker because the state tells us that, so it would be less than that. So I think there could probably be, you know, a ballpark projection if all of the people under that threshold were to apply it, which I don't think that would happen, but we could probably come up with an outside... Would this... Would we need to allocate funding at town meeting?
I think we would be able to go at least the first year with the current overlay that we have and see how we do.
Because it would be... It will be paid out of the overlay account, okay.
There was another reason to do this. The other communities, the way they structured their exemption or their senior tax relief would be to spread it amongst the increase in taxes.
Across the other side.
This would come off the overlay.
Yeah, and that's why I like... I think this provision is... I don't think the amount of impact will be significant, and I think it will be well-housed in the overlay. And I also really like this, bringing this forward from this board, because we still have the senior tax work-off program, which we do fund every year at town meeting, but this is not based on ability. It applies to anybody, and it really does meet the need for our most vulnerable seniors, so I enthusiastically support these. Thank you very much for all your work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. And just closing comments, Mr. Montori, we probably should try to, as best we can, get a budget, because I can see that being a question, you know, potentially just ballpark as a $20,000, $30,000, something. I think we should potentially be able to pull that in with both of these clauses, the 17D and Clause 22, to some degree.
Definitely.
And the next question, we... Based on that budget, that might give us more wiggle room. We might get someone to make an amendment to say, you know something, as opposed to $500, why not $750, as an example, for the veterans from 400 to 600. And just 1.2 to our delegation, you know, we all talk to our delegation, but we just say, let's bring it in-house, you know what I mean? We see examples of thinking outside of the box, so I'm not overly concerned with the delegation. This is something, you know, it's not... Listen, it's not going to solve world hunger, but you know something? It's trying to make a positive impact for some individuals that deserve it, so thank you. It was a lot of work, and it was, you know, collective work on behalf of the board and with Joanne and company too, so... But I think we probably should need that ballpark figures for the meeting, because I could see that being a question potentially, that's all.
We'll have some ballpark. We'll get some ballpark figures.
Even if it's a guesstimate, but good work. I mean, we're just trying to do the right thing in areas where we can, so that's really all I had.
Mr. Chairman, with the board, just I think the board probably should vote to sponsor the both articles. I think that would be appropriate.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
In the language, it says here, the town will not be allowed to increase both the exemption amount and the whole estate, real and personal, such spouse person, not to exceed 5% as determined, 5% of their full tax burden?
No, 5% of the exemption amount or the, in the case of the seniors, the $55,000.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Please, Ms. Stronach, yeah?
Sorry, I do have another question as well. So we could have them, veterans and seniors, take advantage of this as well as the work program, correct? So I just...
As well as other exemption programs we have. We have many more.
And to your point about the delegation, I love that we've done this in-house, but I do think we need to push them to do other stuff that can help us as well. I absolutely agree with you about the in-house, but I just want this... You participate in this and everything else that's available as well.
Please, Mr. Mackey, please.
So one question before we take any motions on this. Given the great feedback that Mr. Johnson provided, do we want to consider putting a pin in this until those options are explored and we hear back from council on the legalities of the proposed changes?
Do we need to make a motion just to remove it? I think we're pretty much in agreement. Let's remove it and see if we get...
Whatever the board wants to do. Yeah, I just...
All right, to that point, to your point, I'll make a motion. I'm sorry?
Talking to myself.
Okay. I make a motion that the board of selectmen appoint, brings these forward on the warrant article for town meeting, annual town meeting in May of 2022, with the existing language, but striking the last lines of each article.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
The language of board of selectmen should be changed throughout to a select board.
Yes, but it hasn't formally been changed yet, so we've been struggling with that on everything we're doing. We just don't want to have a technicality.
We still waiting for them to pass that home rule petition?
Yeah.
What?
Yes.
I can't believe it. The legislature has legislation.
But I'll talk to council about that, too. We're doing the warrant now, and even on... We're just struggling with it.
Understood.
I also have a friendly amendment, just subject to review of council and any recommendations that they make.
I'll bring back those.
Both of those, those are great friendly amendments, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion with two friendly amendments. I think the... Not the... Really, the last line there, that's, for me, that's a big one, and obviously, whatever town council sees that's legally or not legally binding. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thanks again, Mr. Montori and staff for pulling that together. All right, brings us to town... Speaking of Mr. Montori, this brings us to town manager report. Before I do, before we... Mr. Montori, I pass the floor to you. I do want to say that we had an executive session, and it is our obligation as a select board to review your contract and propose any changes to the contract. So I can say in unanimous fashion across the board, we're going to have three amendments, well, not three amendments, one amendment. But we did vote on extending your contract. So just for the town, we have a three-year contract. We did vote unanimously to extend your contract. So currently, it's from 2021. You're in the first year of 2024. We took a vote to extend that for 2022 to 2025, and that's the span of July 1st to June 30th. So essentially, we extended the contract for another year. So that was number one. Point two was a rate increase, a rate increase. So as effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, the board has voted for a salary increase or percentage increase of 2.25%, 2.25%. And we can say over the last year, especially with COVID, you haven't missed a beat. You know, we always wish it could be more, but so that was the second, so we had good debate there. Again, 2.25% increase for July 1st to June 30th, 2022. And last but not least, we did make, we voted 5-0, again, this was unanimous, to amend the contract to reflect that you have 429 hours, 430 hours of unused and accrued vacation time to carry over for future use with no end date. That was a libel of your contract, you had to use it. So essentially, we're going to put that in. So upon termination of your contract, those, those hours will carry over. So that was a third amendment. So thank you very much for everything you do. Hopefully, you can see by the vote, board's vote of approval and support that you're a keeper and we want to keep you. And hopefully, you know, that, that you can feel that through our votes tonight and amended the contract and extended the contract and given you a percent increase. So before I let you get the floor, I'll open up to the board. Any, any other, any other additional feedback from Mr. Montori? We'll just jump right into it. All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I look forward to the, the three changes and I look forward to the next three years. So thank you very much.
A week.
Very, very appreciative. Just jumping into my report, just a quick update on the Hanover Mass Housing update. On February 17th, 2022, we did receive a letter from Mass Housing providing approval of site eligibility for Hanover's 40B project at 300 Ames Pond, citing that Hanover has presented an app, submitted an application to build 300 units of rental housing, approximately on 114 acres, as it stated in the application to Mass Housing. This was no surprise that Mass Housing would approve the site, provide an approval of site eligibility letter, where we weren't surprised at any of the items that were listed in the, in the letter that came to us. It's pretty standard, the language that came forward. So now that Hanover has received this approval for Mass Housing, the next step is for them to submit an application to the town for the ZBA to start holding hearings on their 40B application. They have not submitted an application yet. We do know they plan to do so, we're just not sure when. There might be two driving factors in delaying their application, one being our subsidized housing inventory percentage has not changed, we're still over 10%. So they probably would, because the new census figures have not come out yet. So they're probably waiting for those numbers to change. I know they did consider submitting an application prior to the number changing, but we didn't think that was in anyone's best interest because it could waste time going through hearings for them to be disapproved and then having to refile. So they may just be waiting for those numbers. Now, we don't know when those numbers will come out. They could be as late as June before we see them, maybe later than that. We have not heard either way. The other factor just could be that the cost of construction right now is higher than it's ever been. Supply chain is problematic for anybody doing any type of construction or ordering new equipment, new parts, new anything, supply chain. So that could be delaying them. But right now, we have not heard anything from them since this letter came in. We continue to meet with the abutters on a, on every other week basis. We've had some good dialogue with the abutters during those meetings. They've asked a lot of good questions. We've researched some information for them, providing them information that we have addressed any concerns or issues that they've brought up, answered questions to our fullest, and we'll continue to do that as time goes forward with this project. But right now, the first step in the process, Mass Housing has provided the project eligibility site approval letter to Hanover, and we're just waiting for the next step on their end.
Questions from the board? I was going, I was going to ask when the census, but again, we don't know. It could be June, it could be.
We don't know. I mean, our own local census was delayed because of all of this and those are going out, those will hit the streets soon. So everything has just been delayed because of it.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. I know you continue to meet with the abutters, so thank you for that. And do let us know, can we do anything in the meantime proactively? I know we have a town, we secured a town lawyer as well, but I think it's this point we're waiting for the application essentially, correct?
That's all we're doing.
Okay. Okay. What do you, what's, what's next?
Next item, Town Council invoices. There is one from January 16th through January 31st in the amount of $3,060. I would recommend approval.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0 unanimous. There's a second invoice from February 1st to February 15th in the amount of $2,295. I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The motion, and I have a second by Ms. Stronach. All's in favor? Am I going to say aye?
Aye.
Anything else? Just one other thing, I just wanted to update the board. At the last meeting, Selectman Wellman asked about having a meeting with Mass DOT regarding Route 38's upcoming construction and reconstruction and sidewalk and drainage improvements. We received word from Mass DOT that they're looking to hold a meeting on March 22nd at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall. They're also holding the date of the 29th, just in case for some reason the 22nd doesn't work. But right now, the 22nd, 6:00 PM at Town Hall, and the meeting will be for all of the businesses and residents along the corridor and obviously anybody else that wants to attend to, to listen to the project's details. They're still working on a final schedule for the project and when they're going to begin. But what we do know is that they intend to start in the south, the southern part of the project, near Colonial, and work their way up towards Old Boston Road. We do know that before, usually when they, they do these projects, they start with the installation of drainage and sidewalks. But what they intend to do with Route 38 is to do an immediate course pavement to level the surface. So you get rid of all the bumps that we have right there within the project. Once they do that, then they'll move on to drainage and sidewalks. And they plan to only do 2,000 linear feet of, of work at a time. Complete that, then move on to the next section. The intent is not to take up construction on the whole corridor. So they'll be doing 2,000 feet at a time, but they're still working out those details and they'll come forward with that in more detail when they have the meeting. That's what we know at this time.
Very good. I know we've got some consideration for nighttime construction, too. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, so that's a great point, Mr. Chairman. So most likely, as they've done historically, they'll pave at night.
Okay.
Which will be also beneficial. They plan to have, meet every two weeks with our staff to give us an update on what's, what's happening, as well as any other meetings they have with the contractor. So both Kevin Hatteman, Brian Gilbert have been in good communication with Mass DOT and the regional office. We really do have a good working relationship with them and we anticipate that taking place during this project. So we're pretty happy with the results.
Very good.
Thank you.
That is it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. It brings us to minutes. Do we have some minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have minutes for February 15th regular session. If everyone has had a chance to review, I would make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second, I have a motion, a second by Mr. Johnson. All's in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous 5-0. Any other minutes? I think that was it, right, Mr. Mackey?
That was it.
Brings us the board member report. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things for tonight. So NIMCOG, I'm on the search committee for our new executive director. We will be doing our final interviews in front of the full board on March 24th, that evening from 7:00 to 9:00 or thereabouts. So hopefully, we'll have a new executive director installed at that point. At the last LRTA meeting, an interesting item came up that I wanted to bring to your attention. There was conversation among a couple of the communities and some, the VA in Bedford, VA Hospital in Bedford approached the LRTA to create a transportation corridor between Lowell and the VA Hospital. And that was rejected by the LRTAs being outside the service area because we don't go to Bedford. We do seem to have routes that go to Wilmington Train Station to Burlington Mall. It's just a different route, doesn't go to the VA. So I stopped them and said, well, wait a minute, that's actually, you know, that could be important to Tewksbury. So another member of the committee called me afterward, Mr. Jennings from Bill Ricker. And there is an exploratory group because Acton's looking for transportation, Lexington's looking for transportation, and Bill Ricker's looking for transportation. And MBTA serves these other communities and they don't go there either. So there seems to be this, you know, public transit desert to the VA and likewise to Middlesex Community College. So I took the liberty of calling Lisa Downey, our veterans agent, to see if she thought there might be a need for this service. She said yes. I also talked to Mr. Montori and he said yes. And so I had a conversation with Mr. Jennings today and we're waiting for some information about how the VA Hospital serves vets and what their zip codes are. But Ms. Downing said that there is a need in, in town to have service. And if we were, if the Soldier On project does go forward, as we hope that it does, then we'll have a concentration of folks in that facility as well. But right now, there's an existing need. So I also called all the members of our delegation and raised their attention to this because it's going to be multi-district, multi-regions, there's multiple RTAs. So it's, it's a whole, it's kind of a mess how it works and nobody knows how to quite fund it. So that might need, that might require legislative relief and, but there's enough legislators in that area where they could get some, some momentum. So I wanted to bring this to you because we may need to put a letter together from the board to support this project at some point in the future. I want to take the temperature of the board to see if you thought there was support of this project in the future. It's really not that far off the existing course of the route that goes to the Burlington Mall, but it is not on that same course. So these are things, there's a lot of nitty-gritty. I got an education today from Mr. Jennings, who's a transfer, an almost retired transportation engineer. And if you really want the nitty-gritty, I recommend you talk to him. So I wanted to bring that to the board and just see if, if there was general support for that down the road. Yep, okay. Okay. So there's that. Secondly, I think I've forwarded to the board and to our delegation a report from the state auditor on state-owned land pilot programs, payment in lieu of taxes, as I brought to the board an idea a number of months ago for us to pursue a pilot for the land and the buildings at the Tewksbury State Hospital, which we would then designate to fund our second ambulance and the firefighters and also to our police department because both are spending quite a bit of time servicing, doing runs up to the state hospital or managing different needs in the public safety arena. So I'd like to see if this board would support a letter being sent forward, an official letter from the board, not just me, you know, banging the table. But, and I think there is some support for that, but I would be interested to see if the board would do that. And then I can work with Mr. Montori to put a letter from the board together to ask for legislative relief.
Yeah, I mean.
Bring it forward in a future agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that's probably more appropriate. Yeah, a sample letter, exactly. I think that's probably.
A draft?
A good way to go.
Yeah, just one question for clarification. My recollection is we currently get pilot funds from the state and my impression has been they and pot are connected to, like the state hospital, for example. So what you're identifying is in addition to or different funding?
I don't think we get pilot funding from the state hospital.
So what we get now is earmarked funding.
Yeah.
So each year, the delegation works hard to, as most communities get an earmark within the outside sections of the budget, under particular departments to fund fire services for the support of the hospital or police. This year, we got 75 and 90, 75 police, 90 for the fire. What we tried, what we've been working on this year, which is a little bit different than what Selectman Wellman was mentioning tonight, we've asked the delegation to actually include in the state budget, the funding. So it's not an earmark because we don't want to fight for this each year. It should be a given. And then in addition to it being in the budget, we can ask for earmarks because communities get earmarks, probably in some cases higher than what we get for, and don't even have a state facility in their town. So we should get, in our opinion, both. The approach that was discussed tonight is, is if we can't get it in the budget, then maybe try to get a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes that would either be sent to the town on the cherry sheet or in a separate form, but it wouldn't be specifically in the budget. And I think a lot of this came from the report that the auditor provided communities that the inequity of pilots with, especially for state-owned land throughout the Commonwealth. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach. And I think if we do do a letter and we can discuss this and draft a letter for the board to review at the next meeting, that the board should probably state the priority is to get it within the budget. And if we can't get it within the budget.
Correct.
Then at minimum should be a pilot. And the pilot should be a fair and equitable pilot, as referenced by the state auditor when she discusses pilots. So I think it could be a two-pronged approach.
Well, the whole, the auditor made the point that the entire pilot program at, at the state is underfunded and has been underfunded for years. Even if we hit that number, we're, we're making a lot, we would get much more money than what the earmarks that our legislators are working hard to do. So even if we came in at whatever that level is, but yeah, I concur with Mr. Montori. If we can get it into the budget, that's great. But if not, we should be, we qualify and there's no reason that we shouldn't be on this pilot at all. And why it hasn't happened in either form is a mystery, but I think we should be aggressive in our approach. So we'll bring our letter.
So we can, we can draft a letter and bring it forward. We do get funding on the cherry sheet for state-owned land, but it's just not sure where it, where it's, what it's for. We'll research that more. But even in addition to that, these, it's not just for the, the pilots are really for state-owned land in your community that don't pay taxes. This is more than that. So you really could argue we deserve the pilot and we deserve the money for the service.
Oh, I would concur. And we should ask for both.
We've been asking for the latter for quite some time now, so it's.
Correct.
Totally agree. My recollection is there is a line item in the budget that is classified as pilot.
Yes, it's not that much, maybe $15,000. Maybe $15,000. It's not a lot of money.
I don't think it's this one.
So, so just to be clear, I endorse the concept, I think the town manager's additive language and, and the approach in terms of hierarchy of what we want to accomplish.
Yep.
I know you agree with that. 100% supportive.
So we'll draft a letter like that. We'll try to get both.
Just to, just to clarify again, yeah, absolutely supportive. We've had a lot of discussions around this. I, I think we should put the, the items to not just that letter, but all of the items encompassing that. Because personally, I was somewhat offended when I saw the earmarks that other communities are getting and ours is the same one every year for a service that we are providing. So I think that, that we should look at that in its entirety. I think the letter is a great idea as one of the prongs of that approach, but there's a lot more there for.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
We'll work on that for the next meeting.
Yeah. And then the final thing I had was regarding South Street. I was wondering if it's apropos and you could maybe run this to Town Council to send sort of an amicus brief or other letter in support of Andover's side of the litigation regarding the cease and desist for the contractor's yard.
Yes.
We don't have any standing, but I want my voice in there anyway. So our voice. On behalf of the residents.
I was going to ask for the latest, I still, just not to jump, but just, I think it's still under appeal essentially.
Still under appeal, yeah.
Yeah, no, the whole thing's a mess.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And it could be...
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yeah. And that is all I have. I do want to mention that today is International Women's Day, and I would like to congratulate my fellow selectwoman for her many years of service to this community. Thank you.
We have one more meeting with Ms. Stronach.
We have one more.
Meeting with Ms. Stronach.
But today's International Women's Day.
Speaking of Ms. Stronach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. So I just want to say, first of all, I am totally supportive of getting whatever we can for the luxury of having the state hospital here in Tewksbury and the services that they provide to us, which is none. So at any rate, we had an events committee meeting, and I know that I've mentioned that on October 2nd, we're going to have the Fall Festival. That's a Sunday. But the committee is, the last year was just a really great turnout, was well-attended. We've been switching it up, and it is becoming, we're now having people come to us. We don't, our list of vendors is more than we can take. And so we were exploring the idea of extending this to a possible weekend event. They're very excited about that, but we want to take this in stages and probably start with like a half a day on Saturday before we expand it a little bit more. So I just want to let you know that the committee is going to be working on that pretty diligently, and we are thinking about doing it on Saturday afternoon and getting a lot of community involvement with some groups who we haven't discussed yet, so more to come. And we want to culminate Saturday night with small fireworks things. So I just want to say that they want to grow this into something that is like our event here in Tewksbury because of, other communities kind of sync things into one community. We have a lot of different little things. They want to have one big thing. So that's what they're thinking, and I told the board that, I mean, the committee, that I would bring it to the board so you guys all know about that. If you have any misgivings about that, please tell the town managers so we can ramp it down before we start ramping it up. But we are looking to expand that event. And then the elementary building committee meeting is this Thursday, March 10th, the 10th, right? So we had a Board of Selectmen tour of the school last week, and it's very exciting to see it in person and see all the work that's being done from every time I go in there. So it's great, but we have the planning board, the school committee also asking, so we're going to be doing another meeting. So for those of you who weren't able to attend, we're going to have another one. So I'm going to post it for all of those boards, as well as this one. So, because a lot gets done in a very short period of time over there. So I wanted to mention that. And then this Thursday at 5:30, we're having an outreach for the people at the Ryan School. We want to make sure that the abutters are aware of that, that we're going to be having that meeting. We're going to talk about the taking down of the center school, what's going to be happening this summer, and then how we're going to be opening next school year, because the school won't be open until January, but will be, it'll still be impacting those students in that building. And I encourage the residents in, who are, have students in the Trahan and in North Street to also go to that meeting. So that's Thursday at 5:30, and we're going to have a couple of other meetings because we want to make sure the abutters are aware of what's going on when we cordon off that center school. They're getting ready to move over to the firehouse. Looks like we're going to be on time. We were a little nervous about making that happen, but it does look like it's going to be on time, and that building is going to be coming down. It's going to be pretty wild for me, who drive by it every single day. So those are the things that I have to report. Other than that, I have nothing.
Very good.
And I would just like to say, in terms of women's, I appreciate that, and to all of the women leaders across this town, and the mothers, who I think are also leaders, and wish them all success.
Very good. Very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Sure. I just have one item this evening, and I think all of us are well aware, it wasn't a few weeks back when the weather changed, that we had enormous pothole surprises throughout our community. And, you know, Tewksbury was not unlike every other community in the region, but we were faced with a lot of work to keep on top of that. And it was very telling to me, the town manager shared some data from the DPW. I just wanted to take a minute. We often give praise to our public safety employees for various rescues and other extraordinary acts to serve our community, but I do want to give some commendation to the public works team. The statistics were overwhelming in terms of the effort that was required to meet the unfortunate need of the town on many of our roadways. And I'm sure we're not done with it yet, because we're, we're still in the midst of freeze and thaw, freeze and thaw kind of thing. But their work was outstanding. I know they made every effort to get to as many areas that needed attention as they could. And when you consider the volume of calls, the amount of asphalt that was put down by the crews involved, I think that should be recognized and appreciated, because I know all of our suspensions and tires benefited from that effort. And we go through it every year. We're not different than any other community, but it seemed like it came on in a blink of an eye and affected the community over a few days in a very significant way. So I'd asked the town managers to convey appreciation from the board for their efforts. It should not go unnoticed. And that's all I have tonight.
Great call out. Thank you. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items for update, first being the Economic Development Committee met last week. It was a very informative meeting. One of the things that the Economic Development Committee is currently working on is what their mission is moving forward. The committee, to my understanding, was initially stood up because we had a void that needed to be filled in some of these areas. With the promotion of Alexander Lauder and kind of amendments to her role, a lot of those voids are now being filled. The website, which was a big concern for Economic Development Committee, has been addressed. The outreach and creation of a database or a single source of open locations in town for businesses has been addressed. One-pagers are being worked on for the process of opening or bringing a business to town. So a lot of the previous work that was done by residents and members of the committee is now being spearheaded by Alex. So we're going through that process of figuring out what, what next steps are and what the future of that committee looks like. Another item is the telephone polls. So after our last meeting, I had a number of questions still open. I met with the town manager and DPW staff and kind of dug into some of those questions. One of the things that came out of those, that meeting, was that the DPW is not a reviewer before those come to us. So what I had done was asked Mr. Montori and the DPW to look at that process and ensure that the DPW is included in reviewing. As a subject matter experts, I think we all agree that they should kind of be recommending those actions to us, as they are far closer to our infrastructure and plans for the future. Finally, was the, I think everyone has heard about the spear phishing attack, and I want to be very clear on spear phishing, not a phishing attack. It has been misreported that it was a phishing attack. So I'm going to take a moment to kind of explain the differences and what actually happened. So the investigation's still ongoing, so I'm going to leave out any of the pertinent details. But a phishing attack is what we all get in our email on a daily basis, a random, "Your Amazon account is going to be suspended. Please click here and put in your credit card information." That was not what happened here. This was, I've been doing this for over 10 years now, working in cybersecurity. This was probably one of the most well-coordinated and executed acts that I've seen. It was, they used a lot of open source, publicly-available information to curate a very targeted attack against the town. They went out and they actually bought a legitimate domain for an email. That means that anyone who's been through cybersecurity training at work, the first thing they teach you is look at the email. This was a legitimate email. So there was no failure of people, process, or technology in town when this was done. This was actually a very well-coordinated and executed spear phishing attack. So it was not a, it got sent to 10,000 people. It was sent to a single person impersonating a specific individual. So I just wanted to clarify that. I've gotten a lot of questions and calls around that. Know there's been a lot of questions, so wanted to put that out there. And that is all I have for my update.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Great updates. Speaking of, let's just maybe backtrack to the update around the DPW. I think it's brilliant, you know, case in point. Some of, listen, some of them are cut and dry. We've been doing this a long time. But to your point, maybe the one a few weeks ago, maybe, like, do you need a further insight? You know, there's something, when you think about plowing and safety and all that stuff. So is that something you want to potentially, we don't think we have to make a motion, but maybe have a policy of some sort to say, "Hey..."
So we've added, I've already added them to the sign-off for any future.
Great call out. Thank you. All right, good stuff. And just short and sweet, Ms. Wellman and I, typically, sometimes we are copied from residents. You know, we talk about open meeting laws where we have to do everything in a forum. We're getting copied, there's a resident, residents up on North Bicker, North Bicker Road, and it's a long road. It blends in the High Street and Rogers Street around traffic, traffic safety. It's been going, going, ongoing now for a couple of years at least. I know our traffic officer is deeply involved. So just, I'm going to plan to see that we might bring it to the agenda in this particular case. For instance, what do we know, what do we not know? Because remember, we do have the ability as a board, a few years back, you know, to change speed limits, you know, based on data and analytics. So I just want to be careful, but, you know, the residents driving it. Seems like we have a lot of data. So, Mr. Montori, I want to plan to see with you where I might bring it on the agenda, say, "Let's, what do we know, what do we not know?"
Sure.
And do we make any considerations based on this stretch and the resident? Because he's definitely concerned. There's been a lot of accidents noted. So again, I just want to socialize with the board, and we'll probably put on a future agenda to kind of go over the stats, and maybe we take no action, maybe we take action, or, you know, we can hear from the residents. So that's all.
Good.
And that's all I have. So with that being said, I look for, anything on your side?
Just really quick, I was, Selectman Stronach brought it up earlier, the fire department will be moving out of the current station into the new station, March 21st, 22nd.
Awesome. Very good news. Okay, with that being said, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.